Order. Let us, let us stand.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And read. Now it's. Hey, cut. Right, turn, arc. Oh, order, arc. And. Left, right. Right, and. And, right. Right, left. All right. Oh. Hey. Now it's.
Thank you. Maybe seen it. Motion for approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We now want to have Reverend Kirkpatrick and the John H. Crowder Service Award.
For over three decades, John H. Crowder dedicated his life to supporting the youth of Union County. In honor of his enduring contributions and lasting impact, the Union County Board of Education presents the John H. Crowder Service Award every month to recognize exceptional high school students who actively contribute to their school and community. Recipients of this award excel academically and possess a well-established track record of community involvement. Tonight, we award the John, the April John H. Crowder Service Award to Marvin Ridge High School Junior, Abigail Wan. As the founder of the Youth for Abolition Club, Abigail Wan has demonstrated exceptional initiative and organizational skills. Under her leadership, the club successfully organized nine local fundraisers, raising a total of fifty thousand six hundred five dollars to support survivors of human trafficking. Her dedication to this cause is evident in her ability to plan and host a compelling Q&amp;A panel featuring survivors, Federal Bureau of Investigation agents, and non-governmental organization directors, which attracted more than two hundred attendees and garnered media coverage from WCNCTV. Her efforts educated her peers and also inspired them, leading the club's growth to one hundred six members. Abigail has also shown her leadership capabilities as the student council class president from ninth to eleventh grade and was recently elected to the position for her senior year. She has played a pivotal role in organizing major school events, including the winter formal and prom. Her ability to manage significant responsibilities, coordinate with various stakeholders, and execute successful events is a testament to her leadership, community focus, and organizational expertise. Abigail plans to major in public policy and is currently undecided about her college of choice. Board members and those who are present today, please join me in congratulating Abigail Wan as the April twenty twenty-five recipient of the John H. Crowder Service Award.
Doc Blue.
Good evening. We're excited to celebrate two outstanding employees who have been named UCPS influencers for April. This program recognizes the dedication, passion, and exceptional work ethic of UCPS staff members who go above and beyond daily. What makes the UCPS Influencers Program special is that these honorees are nominated by our staff, students, families, and community members, the very people who witness their positive impact every day. I am honored to present Rachel Sprankle, a fifth-grade teacher at Kensington Elementary, and Curtis Moss, an HVAC technician with the facilities department. I will now invite the nominators to the podium to read the submission and recognize their honorees' accomplishments. Emily Culberson, can you please come up?
Good evening. I'm Emily Culberson, principal of Kensington Elementary. I'll be reading the nomination on behalf of Valerie Marinello, a parent and an instructional assistant at our school who unfortunately could not be here tonight. She nominated Ms. Sprankle, and I am honored to share her words with you. Ms. Sprankle, please come forward and join me. Mrs. Sprankle is not only a skilled educator, she also fosters meaningful relationships with her students to put the, to pull the best out of them. She holds her students to high standards and sets a bar high enough to promote growth without fear of fail, without fear of failure. The connection she creates both in and out of the classroom encourages her students to want to succeed, which isn't always easy with fifth graders. My son was previously struggling with challenges that were impacting his confidence, behavior, and ability to be successful in the classroom. From the first day of school, Ms. Sprankle has been cool, calm, and collected, reassuring me that we would work together to ensure his success this year. She immediately created a way to communicate daily about his day and reflect on it with him before it was shared with us. She built a sense of responsibility and ownership with him, which in turn has encouraged him to want to do his best. Her positive words of affirmation are so meaningful that it truly has an impact on the decision he makes during the school day. Her, her knowledge of the curriculum, classroom management skills, and teaching ability is evident as soon as you step foot into her classroom. As both a coworker and parent of one of her students, UCPS is very lucky to have Mrs. Sprankle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Molly Cobb, a receptionist at Poplin Elementary. Mr. Curtis Moss, can you please come forward and join me? On behalf of the entire staff and students at Poplin Elementary School, I would like to extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude for Curtis Moss's unwavering dedication and excellent service in maintaining and repairing our HVAC systems. Whenever we encounter heating or air conditioning issues, he is always prompt, professional, and diligent in resolving them. His willingness to help and his ability to fix the problems quickly have made a significant difference in ensuring the comfort and well-being of our school community. We know we can always count on him and that reliability does not go unnoticed. Curtis's commitment to excellence, along with his thoughtful and considerate approach to every job, has earned him the respect and admiration of us all at Poplin Elementary. We truly appreciate the effort he puts into every task, no matter how big or small, and we are so grateful to have him part of our school's team. Thank you.
I will now read the UCPS Influencers Proclamation from the Board of Education and Dr. Houlihan. Whereas the Union County Board of Education values the hard work of each employee within the district, whereas performance is an essential part of district operations, whereas Rachel Sprankle and Curtis Moss exemplify the performance, dedication, and teamwork essential to the success of the district and its students. Now therefore, we, the Board of Education for Union County Public Schools and Dr. Andrew G. Houlihan, Superintendent, hereby proclaim Rachel Sprankle and Curtis Moss as the UCPS Influencers for the month of April twenty twenty-five. Congratulations on this outstanding honor and thank you for all that you do to be a positive influence on others each and every day.
Congratulations. We will now enter into our public comments portion. At every regular meeting, of the board, up to sixty minutes have been allotted for public comments. The board will not respond to public comments. However, a member may ask that the chair, Chairman obtain clarification. Residents, parents, students, and employees of the district will receive priority on the list of speakers. If a speaker is not present when his or her name is called, the opportunity to speak will be considered waived. Only person signed up may speak. Speakers may not give their time to another person or have someone speak on their behalf. Speakers may address the board for a maximum of three minutes. The board will not hear an open session. Complaints about the performance of school personnel. Personnel issues. Confidential student issues. Should a speaker wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, members of the UCPS Cabinet Staff are available to address your concerns or provide information. Cabinet Staff members are seated at the table to my left. First up tonight, and I have no problem, if I mispronounce the name, you can correct me. I'll give it my best shot. Mike Petrizzo?
Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good evening, school board members.
Good evening.
Thank you. I am here today as a concerned parent with hopes for some future clarity. In December, my daughter went to a school nurse. The nurse was rude, harsh, and out of line with her comments to my kindergartner. When my wife picked up her, my daughter, her teaching assistant was there trying to console her as the school nurse was rude, so rude, my daughter was in tears. The TA told my daughter that she was sure she'd feel better and be back for her holiday party the next day. The nurse looked at my wife, the TA, and my daughter and said, "It is impossible for her to be back in time for her party, and you will not be here." Woof. What started as a phone call to the principal in hopes to just advise the nurse to have a little empathy for five-year-olds has now snowballed into me being here tonight. You see, when my wife called the principal, he was very open, honest, and kind. However, he was unable to provide any answers about the school nurse's license or background information. He had the nurse manager call my wife, and when she spoke to the manager, she told my wife to look it up herself. When my wife responded that she could not find any of your information or anything other than a Facebook post, the manager said, "Well, that's that then." The implication is no one has a school nurse's license or background information. A woman who is being left alone with our children. My wife proceeded to call the superintendent to try and get some answers, and what was met with, he is far too busy and will not be calling you back, which is interesting to me because he's not too busy to tweet about Texas football during the school day. My wife was directed to our kind, by our kind principal, to call Ms. Tupper, another administrator who is kind and very empathetic, but again, she did not have the information we were trying to get. She then directed my wife to Mr. Jared McGraw and was told he will for sure have her answers for her. He did not. He was rude, to say the least, and said he would not be providing my wife with any information. I then submitted a FOIA request for that information. That request was made on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and I still do not have that. This led me to the question of why are there so many levels of administration if no one has information on the staff that is being left alone with our children? I know everything about the principal, my daughter's teacher, but administration will not even provide a school nurse's license or background information? Why did my wife have to go through four different administrators and I have to file a federal request for information to try and get it? If administrators are making well over what teachers are, why don't they have any answers? These questions have led me to look further into our district administration and what their positions entail, which has only led to more questions. Why is the superintendent making so much when we have entire classes at our schools in trailers? Learning in a trailer is a temporary solution, and the ones at Antioch I know have been there for over a decade. I can only imagine other schools in the district have similar situations. Trailers are neither safe nor productive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just start and it starts, okay? Thank you all for having me. This is my first time here. My name is Kaitlyn Brader. I am a mother of three, and we moved about eighteen months ago from Parkland, Florida. And so I want to talk to you guys from a place of deep knowing of what it feels like and is like upon a whole community to have your members of that community and school ripped apart and taken away, and the effects are profound. And for what it's worth, it is also extremely costly to tend to that community thereafter in the wake of it. I have three students, three kids who are students in Waxall, Cuthbertson Middle and High School. And we're also a military family of eighteen years in the Army and a combat veteran. So tonight I come before you to ask that Union County Public Schools commit to not cooperating with ICE on school property, and I'd like to make my case. I would like to make the case for why this deserves our consideration in an urgent sense. Schools should be places of safety and stability for every student and admin, and the UCPS policies, as well as the law, require that they be so. The district's own policy on student records confidentiality mandates that student information must remain protected, and by allowing ICE access to those records or permitting them to conduct raids on our school grounds would be in direct violation of, excuse me, be in direct violation of this policy and would undermine the trust that the parents do place and our admin place in the school system. UCPS also has a responsibility to provide a safe learning environment, as outlined in our own policies, which I believe this board and the superintendent may have sworn an oath to, and the policy states in quotes, "The school district shall provide a safe, secure, and supportive learning environment in which all students can thrive," end quote. Allowing ICE to operate on school property is incompatible with this commitment. It instills fear and instability, and it is not the environment where our children should be learning and growing as the focus, and I've spoken to numerous families personally where the students are expressing their concerns, either for themselves or their classmates. I'd also like to bring to your attention the Plyler versus Doe Supreme Court ruling further reinforcing this obligation, affirming that every child, regardless of immigration status, has the right to a public education in the United States of America. Allowing ICE to interfere with this right, this right, would violate both federal law and the trust that we place as parents and community members in, all of you as school leaders. By committing in no uncertain terms that UCPS refuse the collaboration with ICE operations on our school grounds, UCPS would be in... Wow, that was fast.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Next, we have Luna Portillo Delgado.
According to the twenty twenty-five U.S. School News Report, Monroe High School has a minority enrollment rate of ninety-four percent, with a total of seventy-seven percent of the school being at an economical disadvantage, a math proficiency rate of twenty percent, reading at forty-six, and science at eighteen. This low proficiency rate is not a failure of our students, but a failure in UCPS as a whole to provide students with the correct teachers, the correct funding, and additional help they need to succeed. This is not the only time you, UCPS, has failed our students. On March fifth, when Monroe High School students walked out in protest of the policies UCPS has in place with ICE, not only did they speak out on immigration struggles, they spoke out on the underfunding Monroe High School has as a whole. As a student who attends Monroe High School, I can give multiple accounts of the impoverished state of our school, whether that be the bathrooms that don't work, not enough space in the classrooms, a lack of funding, as well as the multiple accounts of discrimination and lack of care for minorities, whether that be students having to use broken and old, already used and donated by private schools, equipment, because UCPS doesn't seem to believe that it is necessary for our girls to have safe, usable equipment. Or today, when students attempted to protest, the silence that came after our March fifth protest, asking UCPS to protect our black and brown students, but were stopped by administration at Monroe High School and Monroe Police Department and individually threatened for using their First Amendment rights. When parents and students reached out to the UCPS District Office about these criminal threats and harassment at students, since the first initial walkout, UCPS yet again failed by turning away parents and refusing to answer whether or not students who were a part of today's walkout or last month's walkout were safe. And after that, students were repeatedly threatened by cops, by the school principal. Shame on UCPS and shame on each and every one of you of the Board of Education for allowing this to happen to our students.
Next, we have David Portillo Delgado.
Good afternoon, everybody. Today is April first, twenty twenty-five, and students of Monroe High wanted to protest to show their support, to stop ICE from entering our school, to show support for all the immigrant families in this country. Those students were told by administration that there will be consequences and that Monroe Police Department is, quote, "waiting for them." Those students therefore did not go out to protest because they were threatened. Do you know what this is? This is a violation of the First Amendment. I'm going to be honest with all of you. What the hell is wrong with all of you? You allowed this to happen.
Here, watch your, watch your language.
You are all complicit in denying the right to freedom of speech to the students you are responsible for because you allowed your school to suppress a student walkout. You are all guilty. May it be known that Monroe High School is attacking the First Amendment of the Constitution, an attack that is an attack on all of us. May it be known that the Monroe Police Department happily aided the first opportunity to show its force and authority over a bunch of black and brown students so that the students...
You, we don't, we don't, hey.
...the rest of their lives.
You can continue.
...more is guilty.
No, don't stop him, don't stop him.
They should have stopped this brutal attack on our freedom. You are all currently on the wrong side of history. Redeem yourselves now by apologizing and giving in to the demands of the heroic stewardship of Monroe High, or history will be parched in its empty sand. That is all I have to say.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have three minutes. You have three minutes. Watch your tone. Watch your tone. Watch your tone, or you will be removed. Okay. I don't want you to be removed, so let's just conduct ourselves peaceably. Next is Kobe Blackburn. And the next one that speak out, take them out. I gave them a warning. Next one that speak out of turn, take them out.
Hi, my name is Kobe. I'm a mother of two, one currently in Union County Public Schools and one expected to start in the fall. I'm here not only as a parent, but as a human and a community member of Union County to speak on the silence and empty words of the UCPS's school system in the face of injustice. With Trump's disgusting orders that allows ICE to enter what should be a safe space for students, spreading fear in our most vulnerable communities is not only our job to speak out, but to combat it. Community, students, and parents on numerous occasions have asked UCPS to not only release a statement to make a commitment in ensuring the safety of our students and our children, which apparently isn't a priority for you guys here today. Students have walked out on protest last month and today, and instead of listening to their real fears and their strength for showing up, you have instead wouldn't even allow them on UCPS grounds, which is crazy considering these are your actual students and that's public property. Last meeting, not one of you reached out, made comment, or even acknowledged the fact that there is real fear and hate within your schools, and the parents and students who spoke, not a word. UCPS is ranked sixth in the North Carolina school system, and you would think I wouldn't have to explain why remaining silent when our institutions are under immediate threat is immoral and cruel and what happens when we allow hateful rhetoric to go unchallenged and begin pointing fingers at our neighbors and peers. When the students walked out the first time, the online community of Monroe left hateful, racist, and disgusting comments about our students and our children on our WhatsApp Monroe. Students who, instead of remaining paralyzed with fear, chose to use their constitutional rights. Audrakell in Mecklenburg County, a county over, is already involved in crimes on their campus where a girl was told to go back to her country and beaten so severely she needed surgery. One county over. We are already watching the consequences of inaction and allowing Trump's anti-immigrant rhetoric to go unchallenged. Your silence is violent, and it's crazy to police somebody's words, but not your own inaction. Students who are now scared for their friends, their loved ones, their peers, scared of sanctioned kidnappers, and considering not one person reached out, but you have the audacity to start this meeting in prayer, yet speak nothing to the injustice happening, is crazy and very un-Jesus. In a time where we know better and choose better, it's imperative to make the difference today to protect our children's futures tomorrow. You have a moral obligation to protect our children, not only from the violence of armed gunmen entering our schools, but also combating the racist hateful rhetoric that's currently going unchallenged within our school systems. These kids matter. These are real fears and real things that are happening, and even if you decide to be silent in this, your inaction speaks volumes, and it is violent. So rather policing a kid who's experiencing real fear, you would think that you would actually internally reflect on that. Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Crookshanks.
So my name's Melissa Renee. I'm here as a parent of a Porter Ridge Elementary School student as well as a UCEC student. I would first like to say I may not always agree with the closure decisions UCPS makes, but I always appreciate their overly cautious approach that is often taken. However, the decision not to close schools or make a remote day on March the fifth is beyond concerning. Meteorologists had been warned for days about severe weather that day with high winds from five AM to one PM and almost guaranteed a significant event. It was very clear it would impact Union County during this time students would be transitioning to school. Based on emergency management's assessment and public address, the tornado warning was issued at eight thirty-one, touched down at eight thirty-four, and lifted at eight thirty-seven. The policy is students seek shelter in the building when the warning is issued, not to watch. Porter Ridge has three classrooms in trailers, including our sons. By the time the warning was issued at eight thirty-one and the teacher gathered the students to move them indoors, they were likely transitioning while that tornado was touching down within two miles of them. Next, let's focus on the students on buses or waiting for a bus. Our other son's bus is scheduled to pick him up at eight thirty-nine. He's not the last student picked up. Thankfully, we were home and insisted on taking him. We got notice at eight forty that the buses were delayed due to weather. At this point, the tornado had already touched down and lifted. Also, what happens to all the students that didn't have a way to get those notices? They are, they're left waiting for a bus that's been stopped or rerouted due to weather. These poor bus drivers are stuck trying to protect the students they already have on the bus and knowing they're leaving students waiting in severe weather. Finally, there's the families of students at the middle school stuck dropping their kids off during this event. The tornado touched down behind the high school, spun around the goals of the football field, took down part of the fence on one of the tennis courts, broke a light pole, shattered the windows of a car, all on school property. I find it interesting that during the public address, there were exact details regarding the number of structures damaged, power poles down, but not one mention of school damage. Every time there was a question about the school damages, the response was, "We are still assessing it." It definitely seems UCPS downplayed this event trying to save your butt. UCPS also... UCS also stated in the meeting they stood behind their decision to keep schools open without owning their mistake. It was also stated that a full report would be provided once these assessments were complete. I've yet to see a statement regarding this incident from anyone. And I find it appalling UCS would not admit they made a bad decision that morning. I know we cannot predict every severe weather event and UCS tries their best to make the most informed decision possible, but in this instance, it does not appear they listened to any local meteorologist who reportedly, repeatedly stated for days that severe weather was very likely that day.
Next, we have Jen Sanders.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi.
So I'm excited about the bipartisan bill that is in our legislature right now about giving our teachers a raise. I think that's great, but we do need to talk about the backend of that, which is SB 384, which was just shown yesterday and it is to add homeschools to the Opportunity Scholarships Program. As we know, we've been talking about how much defunding the vouchers have been doing to public education and so I want to give you some numbers and I can email these to you too. So this year in 2024 to '25, it's $191 million that they are taking to put towards the vouchers. Next year, it's $625 million for '25-'26 school year. The following year, '27-'28, it's $675 million. So not much of a jump there, about $50 million. But where it really kicks in is with this new home option. It goes from $700 million to $960 million. Then it jumps up to $1,755 million out of our public funds for public schools for public education. It's not my first time I've told you. I will continue to fight and advocate for public funds in public schools for public dollars that we pay in taxes should go to public schools. So saying that, last month, I mentioned that I wasn't going to sound the alarm about the defunding of public education because as we know, it takes an act of Congress to shut down the whole department. Now, we understand that there are workarounds and the current administration is actively defunding the Department of Education. So it won't really matter if they, if they can't close it by an act of Congress because they're literally siphling the money out of the Department of Education. So when I say that, again, you guys are elected officials and your sole purpose is to fight for public funds in public schools. And I'm asking, what are you going to do when the federal government takes the money out of North Carolina? And what are you going to do when the state takes the money out of our budget because they're sending them now to homeschools and private Christian schools? So again, I'm going to ask that tonight, we're going to talk about the budget, so it should be really interesting. I'm excited, but I'm also really concerned about what's going to be cut, what we might not know is going to be cut because we don't know what's going to happen with all the other government issues. So while I'm asking, will you allow this administration to bully everyday Americans into compliance by getting rid of DEI, allowing our kids to be terrified about thinking they will be snatched by ICE? And is this a democracy we're fighting for? Because public education is a right for every American child.
We have Reagan Shaw.
I'm not even really sure what to say anymore when I come up here. There's so many things that are going wrong and I've been asking you guys for so long to publicly advocate and you don't seem to understand that that is part of your job. I kind of think that there's just only so much that this country can take. There's only so much the country can take, there's only so much the county can take, our UCS schools. I mean, how bad does it have to get before you say something? Do they have to take the tables out from underneath you? The, the sashes off? Like how much can they defund public education before you actually publicly say something? It's just gotten absolutely absurd and you're part of that. You're, this is a partisan board, except for Reverend Kirkpatrick, you are all part of the Republican Party and you take money off of them and you share a stage with them. You know, I saw you Kathy on the stage with Mark Harris. I mean, these are people who are talking about pushing the voucher program and that, that, I mean, I hope that teacher pay raise goes through, but they, it's a stunt that they usually pull. It never makes it through the Senate. They're trying to distract you from what they're actually doing. I want to give props to the, the students at Monroe that are going out to protest and I would ask that the board treat them with respect and their concerns with respect. ICE doesn't belong in our schools, everybody knows that. It's completely absurd. This school should be a safe place for kids to learn. There's no reason ICE officers should be interfering with that space. People need to, to not have fear when they go to school or they, when they drop their kids off at school. This is not a place where there should be immigration officers with guns. Like that is just absurd. That's a Trump nonsense thing and that's why many of us said a lot of these policies are garbage. They're garbage. And one of our school board members actually owned that and went around on a Trump garbage truck. You know, I mean, it's garbage to have, to have ICE officers in our schools. And I know you said you think you know what these kids are up against because you are a documented immigrant. What about the undocumented immigrants? These kids, they're just kids. They didn't make that, any, you know, decisions themselves. They shouldn't have to worry about being pulled out of their classroom. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is that there are a lot of things that, there's legislation going on that's banning diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we're talking with Mo Green about what's going on. I really hope that you understand that diversity, equity, and inclusion should be part of UCS always and forever and we are going to fight for it. And when you try to fight it, we'll be right here to call you out on it because it's important. It's for all of our students. And this anti-DEI, as I love to throw initials around as if it's not a real thing, it's diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it's real and we're going to fight for it and we're going to work with, with Mo on it and we're not going anywhere. We're going to be here.
Next up is Myra Trinidad.
Good afternoon. My name is Myra and I am a North Carolina resident. Today is my second time being here in Monroe. The first was on March 5th. On that day, the brave students of Monroe High School, Union County, took to the streets to demand that the Union County Board of Education issue a statement in defense of the students against ICE. Since March 5th, no statement has been made in the defense of these students. As a Mexican and a recent high school graduate, I was incredibly moved by the actions of the Union County students on March 5th. I've seen firsthand how ICE affects these families, how it rips them apart. This is not about lowering crime. They are using immigrants as scapegoats. Immigrants are hard workers and valued members of our community, not criminals. They are people that come here for better opportunities for themselves and their children. These opportunities are being ripped apart as parents and their kids are now feeling fear when being sent to school. They fear not knowing if they'll be reunited with their parents by the end of the day. They fear being separated from their siblings. They fear the uncertainty that comes with every day that they walk into that school. I am not a parent myself, but to those that are here, I ask that you make an attempt to imagine the amount of indescribable fear and uncertainty that these innocent immigrant parents must feel when sending their kids to school. Many kids across this country have been pulled from school due to the shared fear. Schools should be a sanctuary place, not a place where families feel fear and uncertainty. The Union County Board of Education claims that their goal is to provide high-quality instruction each day and provide a safe learning environment for all students. However, the students of Union County have expressed that they do not feel safe due to the rumors of ICE raids. They are missing school due to the fear of being separated from their families and they are not able to receive high-quality instruction every day when they are in fear of raids. It is the responsibility of the Union County Board of Education to protect our students and provide a safe environment for all. In making a statement in the defense of students against ICE, Union County will set a historic precedent, one that would protect thousands of families and provide a safe environment for them. I am here on behalf of all the immigrants that are currently living in fear to demand that you keep your promise of providing a safe environment to your students. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dana Al Hassan.
Hello, good, good evening. My name is Dana Al Hassan. I'm a public health professional and I'm also a member of PSL, the Party for Socialism and Liberation. In the past couple of months, I've been coming to Monroe, door knocking and talking to residents outside Compare Supermarket and La Unica and downtown. And literally every person that I have spoken to is concerned about the ongoing attacks on immigrant families and that they're genuinely upset that students are scared to go to school, that this is an issue that impacts all of us whether we're immigrants or not. We've seen that under Trump's first month in office, over 8,000 immigrants have been arrested and over 37,000 people have been deported. Even last month, Mark, last week, Marco Rubio bragged about how over 300 students have had their visas revoked. We've seen people like Mahmoud Khalil and Ramesh Aoustark who have been abducted by unidentified masked, unmasked ICE agents, kidnapped in the middle of the street and taken to Louisiana to sit in an ICE facility. And what was their crime? For speaking against the genocide. Their crime is free speech. And I ask for all of you to listen because this is extremely important because what's happening right now is outrageous and it represents an aggressive and destructive assault on the immigrant community and on all of us and the working class. On day one of Trump's second presidency, the Department of Homeland Security rescinded the existing policy memo that limited ICE from conducting raids and arrests at sensitive areas, including schools. With the recession of this memo, students will all be put at risk of harm in the course of raids and arrests conducted in these sensitive locations, reducing everyone's safety and security. And so this is exactly why we demand that the Union County Board of Education issue a statement in defense of the students against ICE because students deserve the right to education and safety at school. Students can only receive a high-quality education if they actually feel safe doing so. And at this time, students do not feel safe because they're missing school due to rumors of raids or they're too distracted by fear to concentrate. And we cannot separate what's happening nationally with Union County School District. These issues are all connected. And this is exactly why now is the time to act and now is the time to act with courage and not to cower in fear. This is a do or die moment and Union County has the opportunity to set a precedent for North Carolina and for the rest of the country by issuing a statement and saying that you will not collaborate with ICE and to protect the students and to put the students' needs first. We cannot allow for these attacks to continue and we are here to tell you to do the right thing, to do the brave thing, to follow the lead of these brave students and say no to collaboration with ICE. Thank you.
Next, we have Frankie Anderson.
As you all may know, about a month ago, students at Monroe High School participated in a walkout to defend immigrant families. I participated in this, in this walkout and was very moved. With more than 100 students that walked out in solidarity with immigrant families and students, we made a strong statement asking for protection against discrimination and deportation. It was inspirational and these students acted in an incredibly brave way. Next, the students have put together a petition for the school to put out a statement that they will not comply with ICE. Almost 300 people have signed this petition. The students are engaging in a variety of tactics to ask for protection, yet the students have been met with repression. Today, the students planned another walkout that was met with a disgusting display of intimidation by police to students saying that there will be consequences for using their First Amendment rights to stand against a racist administration. This is a school, not a prison. How are kids supposed to rise and thrive, as they say, when they fear that themselves, their friends, and their family will be deported? Your job as the school board is to put practices into place that protect your students, not put them in danger. Having reactive cops on campus is nothing but dangerous. As a concerned citizen, I ask you to release a statement that you will not tolerate cops and administrators to intimidate students and to scare students out of practicing their First Amendment rights. We should always encourage students to speak their minds, to voice their concerns and speak for justice. This is why we are here today, to release a statement that you will not comply with ICE and therefore continue to uphold your promise to protect these children.
Our final comments on Alexander Fong.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alex. I came to this meeting to speak in support of the recent petition, calling on this board to adopt a clear policy of non-cooperation with ICE and in support of the multiple grassroots actions put on by students and families demanding the same. We're just over three months into the Trump administration and the attacks on immigrant families and students has been escalated like never before. The Trump admin, Trump has eliminated longstanding policies that protected schools, churches, and hospitals from raids. Now the threat of raids weighs heavily on students across the country regardless of immigration status. This change of policy turns schools from a sanctuary for learning into a potential trap. No student should fear arrest and detention for just going to school. The people know that ICE is spearheading the attacks on our basic democratic rights and the Constitution. The administration is using ICE to silence people's right to freedom of speech and to systematically deny immigrants the right to due process. As leaders of this school district, your teachers educate young people about the importance of our rights and freedoms in this country. How can a public school district dedicated to developing our youth collaborate with an agency that tramples on their rights and their futures? It cannot. You are all in a position to put in place policies that prioritize the safety of our students regardless of immigration status and to defend them from looming raids. ICE does not belong in our schools. Thank you.
Thank everyone for speaking, but I do want to reiterate once again, for those that are listening, those that are here. That podium is, is not a podium for anything other than to render your view as a citizen. You have three minutes to do that. It is not for you to go and to speak out of turn or use foul language or bang on it or destroy it. But that's your platform. I want you to have that platform. But you won't have it if you don't conduct yourself properly. So please, come, come with what you have to say. Bring your passion. Bring your words, but don't bring the attitude. No, there's no speaking. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for March 11th. Long with the students. Yeah, officers, take him. Take him. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for our March 11th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have our consent agenda, motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have our Doc Superintendent's report.
Are we good? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four items this evening, beginning with a big congratulations to Poplin Elementary School, who are our back-to-back winners for Books in Brackets. As always, yes, congratulations. As always, we had a phenomenal time celebrating the literacy accomplishments of our readers and- the literacy accomplishments of our readers and our elementary students. I really want to thank our sponsors and Wingate University for hosting us again. Next, it is time to begin our annual Books Drive. We will be collecting books beginning April 7th for our mobile book bus. As a reminder, this book bus travels throughout the county to provide free books to our children during the summer to help them build a home library. Information will be posted on our social media and parents and employees will receive information through Final Site and Peachjar. Please do what you can to support this literacy initiative and to drop off books. Next, we are very hot off the press. We are very proud to announce that Mr. Adam Haas, who is a STEM teacher at Rocky River Elementary, received the 2025 Boroughs Welcome Fund Award for STEM Careers. He is one of five recipients in the state that was recognized for exceptional teaching in science, technology, engineering, and math. He will receive a $175,000 contribution over five years to enhance professional development for the district and to enrich STEM students for, or to enrich STEM experiences for students. Let's all give Mr. Haas a big round of applause for this wonderful accomplishment. And last, we are two and a half weeks away from spring break. We're all looking forward to that time of the year. As a reminder, we will be closed from April 18th through the 25th. I hope all of our families have a wonderful time with their family and friends. And when we get back, we will only have five weeks left in the school year. Thank you. That concludes my report.
You can keep going. Now we will have our budget presentation. Now, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So thank you. So as we begin our superintendent's budget proposal, I wanted to provide some context to the presentation tonight because it is a little bit different based on what is happening in the county. As a reminder, Union County has been going through a reevaluation process. Typically by now, we have received information regarding the value of the tax rate and the revenue that has been generated and proposed to support UCPS for next year. We currently do not have that information and do not expect to have that information until the April 10th joint board meeting. So tonight, you will not see any information provided on this proposal that indicates any revenue portion from the county. Next, we, our process will continue to be this recommendation tonight, the joint meeting on April the 10th, followed by the May board meeting where the board will adopt a final budget for '25, '26. Just a few key priorities you're going to hear, which is going to be very similar to years past. Number one, continuing to invest in our employees, particular our teacher supplements, as well as some additional compensation increases, addressing key programmatic improvements and inflationary adjustments, as well as looking at our funding to help support classroom teachers and classroom support programming, really continuing to put money forth and investing in our employees. We have some projected state salary figures, but we still don't have anything final as there is not a proposed state budget yet. And the last thing I want to remind the board is, as I remember, last year's budget, we eliminated upwards of $5 million and redirected those funds for the purpose of supporting teacher supplement increases. And I want to repeat what I said then, tonight, that is not a sustainable way to conduct business. We look forward to working with our Board of County Commissioners, beginning on April 10th, to really advocate for continuing those increases in order to remain competitive, not just with districts across North Carolina, but also with the state of South Carolina that continues to make this a big push on increasing teacher salaries. So Ms. McClam, I'll turn it to you.
Yes. So as Dr. Houlihan mentioned, several of his priorities, as well as our capital planning. Every year, we also put together a capital improvement plan that includes our laptops, facility needs, and some additional things that we have identified in our transportation department. We've got some activity buses and some other things that they've needed. Plus, we always have an annual $50,000 amount that we provide to one high school each year to do their band uniforms and equipment. So I'm going to get into the, some of the nuts and bolts. As Dr. Houlihan mentioned, we do not have a state budget yet. I don't have any planning allotments at this time. I will be in Durham later this week. Hopefully I will get some of that information from them when we meet. We're using what we got this year. We're using our current and trend information that we know on an annual basis about how much we normally get in increases from the legislature for any of our certified and non-certified staff, as well as our hospital insurance and our retirement rates. We don't have any of that either, so I'm using a flat 5% budget increase, hoping that that will help level out between the two of what we anticipate those increases to be. As we go into this coming school year, I will point out that we are now what they call funded interrears. So we are projecting a flat enrollment for this coming school year for our UCPS enrollment number. So we will get our money based on our 40-day enrollment number from this current school year. So unless we grow greater than that number by, and it used to be 100 students or more, then we will not receive any more funding for those students. So we're kind of in a transition year. We have more students funded this year than we will be having when we start the next school year. So I just will point that out. But we also have to also make sure we account for any increases in our charter school enrollment. So that's why anytime we have increases in our local enrollment or local funding, that increases our charter funding as well. So we do have some fluctuation in our charter enrollment that we still have to account for regardless of how we receive some of our state dollars, is what I'm pointing out about our funding. Okay. So this current school year, we increased our local teacher supplement by 1,00150. That brought us up from number 50 as compared to all of our peers across the state to number 37. But I will still continue to bring up the amount of funding that we get per pupil. When we compare ourselves to other districts in the state, we receive, out of 115 districts, we receive the lowest per pupil number at 115 from state funds in the state. And we're the sixth-largest school district in North Carolina. Conversely, when you put all of our state, local, and federal dollars together, total per pupil expenditures, we rank at 113. So the proposed local operating with the information and projections that we outlined in the previous couple of slides with utility increases, our charter school enrollment numbers, and the salary and benefit mandated increases that we will cover based on what is passed at the General Assembly, we're looking at a, just to maintain operations, $3,967,862. So those are all of our mandated increases. When we move over to additional needs that we have throughout the district, as we outlined before, can program continuations. I will remind you all, we did receive $3 million in non-recurring funds from the county this current school year. Those funds were used to support our ESL and our EC population as well as expansion of our tutoring, our math tutoring program. So you'll see that as an additional need that we've got to try to see if we can't maintain that. Our inflationary increases that we seek for every year for our transfer, I mean, technology and facilities department, just to try to address the growing need and the cost of things getting greater and greater. And then long-term sub-costs. We have a great benefit for our teachers and staff for parental leave. That parental leave, paid parental leave, has increased the need for sub-coverage in a lot of our classrooms because our parent, you know, when our parents are having children, they have the ability to take extended time off. Some of the other recruiting and retention items, we did include a $2 million increase, 2 million, sorry. I wish it was a $2 million increase, a $2,000 increase to our local teacher supplements. That increase costs right at $7.6 million for us to be able to cover another increase to our teachers, local teacher supplements. We've got several marketed studies and adjustments that we have been reviewing for our skilled trades areas with our, in transportation and facilities, that we're seeking some funding to help make sure we can keep up with the market and be able to implement some changes in some of those areas with compensation. And then some of our talent acquisition. So what I've included in a talent acquisition line, we've got some, the need in our EC area for their psychology interns. They are paid internships that we're competing with other districts on getting them into our schools in hopes that we can fill our positions with those interns once they complete their education. We also have a year one of five to add some nurses in our school buildings. If you will recall, we used ESTR dollars to have nurses in all of our schools. When ESTR dollars were no more, we no longer have those funds, we are looking to try to increase the number of nurses we have in our school buildings. Plus, we did, we have been reviewing some of our employment at our elementary schools, and we have a category of data managers and bookkeepers that are not 12-month employees. So we've included some additional months of employment for them to make them both 12-month employees as we see when we go into Infinite Campus and some of the software transitions that we have, we really need those individuals to be there 12 months. So all the additional needs that are outlined come to $14,161,395. So when we get to our operating capital, as always, we always, we are continually trying to maintain aging facilities, updating aging infrastructures, looking at classroom technology and fleet replacement and maintenance. So our facilities and what has come out of the Facilities Committee was a $22,609 capital improvement plan for our facilities this coming school year. Transportation has several activity buses. I believe there's eight activity buses that they need to replace. They've got a service vehicle and a service truck that they also need, have made a request for. One of the things that came out of our budget process is that we have a lot of schools that were all built around the same time. And those schools are getting, while we still consider them new schools, they're about 20 years old at this time, 15 to 20 years. So we're seeing a lot of equipment failures and things in some of our cafeterias that we really need to make sure we don't all go down at one time. So we wanted to build something in as, to start replacing some of those key pieces of equipment to ensure that we can continue to maintain. Plus, we have all of our laptop leases. We're in the process now of evaluating technologies, evaluating our three-through-five laptop lease program to do a renewal on them this coming school year. So we're still working through all of those numbers. And then for this coming school year, Piedmont High School would be the next school on the 10-year replenishment cycle for our band uniforms and equipment. So all of those needs together for our capital would be $28,924,602. So I'm going to show you where we are currently. So our current year appropriation in our local operating budget's 130 more, 130 million. Plus, we have a little over 19 million in capital outlay. So we have a total appropriation from our county commission of $149,946,755. What I've just gone through on both of the, or on the past several slides, would be a little over $18 million increase to our local operating request and $9.5 million increase to our capital budget plan. So a total additional funding request for this coming school year of $27,718,784, all total. Now, as we did mention, you don't see, normally when you see these slides, I have some line item of anticipated funding from the county. So none of that has been included in this. So hopefully when we meet with the county at our joint meeting, we'll get a little more information and detail so we can start working towards some version of what funding we may, funding increase we may see. I have printed a copy and online, there are a lot of supplemental statistics and graphs that I've provided for all of you, but I'll stop at this point. I'm not going to go through the, all of those graphs, but I was going to open it up if there's any questions or anything you, anyone has that they need any clarification on. I know this is a big budget request, but these are all the needs of the district. And, yes.
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Shawna, when you say we are the least-funded school district, 115 in the state, can you talk or speak to how that number is calculated?
So all of our state allotments are based on a funding formula of some sort. Every allotment has its own formula. They use wealth in a tiered, there's a three-tier system that the state uses in a lot of those formulas that allocate funds higher or lower based on where you fall in that three-tier. We are a Tier III district, which means that when it comes to wealth factors and what they might consider low wealth factors, we rank pretty well at the bottom of the list. So we are excluded a lot of times from some opportunities and don't get as much funding based on the wealth of our county.
And then also, the $2,000 stip, or not stipend, but the
Supplement.
Supplement from the county, where would that move our rank next year? Considering everything else stays the same.
Right. So if all other districts stayed the same, that would move our rank to 10. And we've really been striving to get to number 10. We're sixth-largest district to try to get somewhere in that top 10. So that's what I'm projecting based on where everyone else is currently.
Where is the highest that we've ever been in that rank?
I think we were at 12 maybe at one point. Probably seven or so, eight, maybe six or seven years ago, we were at about 12. You're making me go on my way, way back. I'm not as good with my memory anymore, but I think, I think that's about where, as high as I can recall us being.
Any other questions?
I do. You said there's a new charter coming. Which one is that?
No, that number you saw was a growth number in charter enrollment. I know there are some private schools that are adding some grade levels.
Right.
But I'm, I'm not sure about a new charter. I'll have to double check.
Charter enrollment, the opening of new charter, an initial enrollment of 600?
Look, yeah, I'll double check. I know we have charter number in, that charter increase that I've put on the page is a growth factor that's based on the current numbers that we're using. I'll have to double check. I didn't realize it said there was a new.
I know there's another one in the process.
I did that at the very beginning. I'll have to double check. I'll double check.
And then the skilled trade, the market adjustments, is that just skilled trade? The skilled trade market adjustments, is that just the skilled trades or is there other positions in that market adjustments line item?
There are TAs. I'm sorry. I forgot to mention that we did put the teacher assistants in that market analysis as well. It's been several years since they've had any review of their current salary schedule.
Thank you.
I have a question. When you talked about the charter schools and the amount, what percentage of that budget is that that goes to charter schools and their enrollment?
Of our total budget, approximately 10%, 10% of our total local budget goes to charter schools. Our total charter school budget amount is a little over $13 million. So anytime our local dollars increase, that per pupil goes up. So the portion that they get, I have to budget more in that line item to reserve to, for that per pupil that goes to the charter schools.
Do you happen to know offhand how many students we have that go to charters?
It's a little over 5,000 students currently that we have in charter schools.
I'm sorry, what?
It's over 5,000 students that we have, probably almost six.
It could be anywhere in the state, is that right?
Well, they could be anywhere in the state. Most of our charter school students are in, you know, we have a large number in Union County because we have several charter schools in our county. But we pay about 25 or 30. County because we have several charter schools in our county, but we pay about 25 or 30 different charter schools, and they may only bill us for one or two students.
Thank you.
I think one of the, and the charter school component. Check one, okay. From the time I got on this board, that was a question that I had about all the money that we send to charter schools and trying to figure out how to keep our students within UCPS. And we have all of these housing developments that's being built, especially in Monroe and Wingate and outskirts of Monroe, and a lot of those families are going to charter schools as well. So I really wish we could try to figure this thing out on how to keep our money in-house.
Well, and part of it, I think, a lot of the charter schools, because they are a public school and they receive state public school funds, I, I think, and this is just anecdotally, but my, my thought is that a lot of times, because they do market as a public school, that they are really attracting maybe some families on our reputation. Because they're in Union County, and they know Union County is a great school district, and I think they just, a lot of families maybe just make that association on their own because they're a public school.
Shawna, I'm sorry, I have to repeat that. When you said, when, Ms. Price was asking about the, um, thank you, the teacher supplements to get us higher up, I'm sorry, what, how much did you say we needed to, or we potentially would need to get us up there?
This, this, a $2,000 increase that we have proposed tonight would get us to number 10, if all other districts in the...
If they stay the same, though.
Right, and so...
Which is unlikely to happen.
Some, some, but when I look at the ones who really have increased quite a bit or historically put more money every year into their teacher supplements, they're already ahead of us. So what I see between where we are now and where that would put us, I don't see a huge, like, a, a, a district that might put a lot of money. So we would hopefully get close. I mean, I don't know that we might make it to 10, but maybe between 10 and 15, yeah.
The other way I look at that is, last year, we were able to do 1250 for every individual teacher, and that moved us from 50 to 37. So doing more than we did last year, I think that's why we have a little bit more confidence. Even if other districts do something, being that aggressive of a $2,000 per teacher will help us even more.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm sorry, I forget. Did that include for what, I know you mentioned with substitutes and TAs, instructional assistants?
No, they don't get, they don't get local teacher sup, no, the, the teacher supplement really is for our instructional staff, yes.
So what do we do in the case of like TAs and things like that, like ECTAs that like...
So we did, we did some things for our teacher assistants and our ECTA specifically, maybe two years ago, and I'm glad someone pointed out, I forgot to mention in the market analysis that we've done, we have included our teacher assistant scale in that market analysis.
Lasted that, so was that?
For the ECTAs, it, it was maybe four years ago since we did the whole TA scale.
Okay.
But they always, just so that everyone knows, if, if there is a state increase, like whatever the state increase is, those scales increase with it. So we don't have employees that have not gotten any kind of increase. We just try to make sure we stay competitive with either surrounding districts or in like categories. That's why a lot of times we see some of the skilled trades and others, I think we're competing with a different market, so sometimes those get a little out of whack quicker than we do on some of our instructional staff.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Great job. Next, Ms. Morris, policies? Oh, oh, thank you. I've been getting briefs all day. Does Chair entertain a motion to receive the recommended superintendent's budget? All in favor? Aye. All right. Ms. Morris?
Good evening, everyone. We have two, probably our shortest agenda on policies for first review that we've had in a while, and I will try and answer any questions that anyone has on them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Greetings.
I had to write down something, so. So as I listen to our students today, I must say that I am very proud of them for taking the stance for what they believe. I believe that they have shown a strong level of strength, passion, and I support anyone's efforts who stands for what's right. Change takes place by speaking truth to power, and even if people like it or not, it seems that decency has left our society, and we are more committed to an administration for some that is causing more division than unity. There were laws that were created which caused segregation and division and birthed hatred in our country for many, many years. Hatred is not birthed from Christ, but hatred is birthed from the enemy. And the Bible tells me that the enemy comes to kill, steal, and to destroy. It is a disgrace that we have yet to live up to the pledge stating with liberty and justice for all. This country was built on the backs, the hands, the feet, and the minds of black and brown people, and in 2025, we are still in the fight where a national slogan still has not given me the answer that I'm looking for when we ask, when we make this statement, "Making America Great Again." It was great for some, but it was not for all. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is what has made this country. And we have people, family, and students who are scared and fearful. And I pray for our students, I pray for our schools, I pray for our families, and I pray for our community, that we will take the scales off of our eyes. I have no issue with your protesting and speaking out for what you believe. I encourage you all to continue to fight and continue to speak truth to power, because just as years ago, and I believe now, that there will be a change because of your passion and your commitment and your love for all individuals. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
Sarah Mayne, and I went to Wake Up to Ag Day. It was wonderful. If somebody has gone there, you should. It's really good. Thank you for the Union County Corporative Extension Service as well. Thank you.
Anybody else? First of all, I had a great time Friday. I had books in brackets, and again, echoing Dr. Houlihan, congratulations to Poplin's back-to-back. Great job for them. The, um, as a young man, I, I walked the protest line for, for causes that I believe in. And I really believe that that podium provides an opportunity for the citizenry of our county and visitors to come and to, to share their thoughts, their ideas. And so I'm never really quick to, to interrupt, so when I do, I know that I've given everybody ample opportunity. But concerning the, the issue at hand, when that first came out, I believe two meetings ago, Dr. Houlihan laid out a robust statement concerning how we would, would handle that. So when comments are made that we've said nothing or we've stood in silence, we've not been silent. We shared what our response would be when law enforcement of any kind comes to our school. We made that clear. We are not going to refuse or stand in the way of any legal efforts by law enforcement to, to do their job. We're not going to impede them from, from doing, from doing that. People in America, in the course of not necessarily ICE or any of those immigration agencies, but regular law enforcement, when somebody is arrested, you're separated from your family. That's not, that's, that's, that's what happens when we come face-to-face with law enforcement. And so, but there is no record of anybody, of any ICE coming into our schools and raiding our schools. I wrote down the word because I heard it several times, rumors. I think it is, it is sad because when people put forth rumors or, or heighten someone's actions that something is going to happen, that there is no record of that happening across the country where ICE is raiding schools or churches. That is not something that is happening, and it's not happening here. We have great law enforcement, from Sheriff Kathy, to Chief Gilliard, to the other chiefs. They work well with our federal partners as far as law enforcement is concerned. And so I just want to encourage those to have your passion, protest your desires, but let's, let's look at the facts as far as our schools being raided and schools are not. Our hospitals being raided, they are not. Our law enforcement people doing their job, they're doing their job. And so I just want to, to encourage people, not to heighten people, not to instill fears where facts don't back up what they're saying.
Yeah, Jimmy, I'm sorry, I just want to piggyback off of that, too, just, you know, I, I get people's passion, I understand it as well, but, you know, again, it's almost the fear-mongering, the people that come and they're saying that we're doing this and we're not standing up, okay, we're not the federal government, we're not federal police, that's one, and they're not going into schools, they're not separating anybody, at least not from what I've heard. So if we bring out the actual facts, that's different. But fear-mongering and scaring people into thinking that this is going to be happening or it's happening here in Union County is false. And that's my take on it, and I just, you know, it's just, I had to say that because I'm getting, it's, it's just, I don't understand where, I guess I'm not sure where the, where it's coming from. Like you said, it's, it seems like rumors and, you know, things like that, so, but I, I agree, and I back, back that up, that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Announcements?
Finance meets the 29th at 8:00 via Zoom.
April 30th, Facilities is at 9:00 a.m., and Curriculum is at 10:00 a.m. via Zoom.
Policy is April 15th at 8:00 a.m.
And SPIT, Strategic Planning, Transportation Technology, will be meeting on the 30th at 8:00 a.m. via Zoom.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.